Good morning. San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting of January 8, 2020 will please come to order. Please rise and join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Chair Gupta?
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox.
We now open the floor for any oral communications. Are there any speakers who would like to speak on any items that are not on the agenda? Do we have any speaker cards?
None.
Having none, no speaker cards, I would like to close the public hearing at this time. Let's move on to consideration of the minutes. We have minutes from November 13, 2019 meeting and December 11, 2019 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the revised minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All who oppose say nay. So the minutes are approved as revised. The next item on our agenda today is election for the chair and vice chair of 2020 Planning Commission. So do I have nominations?
Yes.
For the chair?
Yes. I do propose the nomination of Commissioner Hanson as president.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Staying.
Do you accept?
Yes.
Then we have election for our vice chair.
I would like to nominate Mario.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, would you like to change, switch seats?
No, I'm happy to do it here.
Meeting is all yours.
Keep eye on everybody, you know?
And welcome back, Chair Hanson. Is this your second or third time as chair, do you recall? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot on that.
I can't tell you. It's been, it's been a long time. Okay. So we'll move to the regular agenda. Can we have the first item read in, please?
Item number one, owner, Geestie Trust, applicant, Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space Trust or District, file number PLN 201900242, location, southeast corner of Verde Road and Parisima Creek Road.
Good morning, commissioners. Here is item number one. We're, this is a consideration of a coastal development permit to allow demolition and removal of an abandoned oil facility, including above-ground storage tanks, piping, processing facilities, and other structures that are on site. The project also involves the removal of a hunting cabin and associated septic tanks to the north and disposal of 3,000 gallons of light crude oil that has been sitting in these tanks. And then the, based on studies that are conducted in the field, there will be removal of contaminated soils. Approximately 140 cubic yards of soil will be removed. They'll be regraded and revegetated with native materials. Here's the, here's the site, the southeast corner of Verde Road and Parisima Creek Road. The site is, it's approximately 240 acres, four miles south of Half Moon Bay. And this was included in the, in your packet here. This just shows the areas. The sites A through D are the sites of the oil equipment that will be removed. And Site E to the north is the site of the hunting cabin. So these are all the, the sites where the project is taking place. Here are a few photos for context. This is the side of the oil well. And then this is the, the, one of the storage tanks. This is, this has the most oil in it, approximately 1,800 gallons of oil. And then this is the, the hunting cabin to be demolished. And then there's also septic tanks on site that will be removed. So the, the project's been reviewed with respect to the applicable general plan and local coastal program policies, as seen here and shown in the staff report. Just to touch on a few, for vegetative water, fish, and wildlife resources, there are dusky-footed wood rats nests that have been identified on the site and on the actual equipment. So the, the project is expected to begin in the fall of 2020 to avoid bird and wood rat nesting or breeding seasons. So approximately 14 wood rats have been identified, and six to eight will be removed on site under the supervision of a qualified biologist. And then the, the wood rats nests that are not on site, that are around the construction area will be, they will be live-trapped and relocated within the area, within 50 to 200 feet of the, of the area. And then, continue on. And then pre-disturbance surveys will be conducted before any work is, is done on the site to identify more dusky-footed wood rats and then, which is a species of special concern, and then other protected species like the Cal, the San Francisco garter snake and the California right-legged frog. And based on staff research, there appears to be no historical or archaeological resources on, on site, as the, the site has already been disturbed by the, the oil equipment. But staff recommends pre-disturb, a condition that requires pre-disturbance training for workers to identify cultural and paleontological resources. For the environmental view, the, the project is exempt under CEQA guideline section 15304F for minor alterations to the land and 15330 for small or medium-sized cleanup actions to stabilize, mitigate, or prevent the release of hazardous waste at a cost of a million The project has been reviewed under and found to be in compliance with the local coastal program and the San Mateo County general plan, as detailed in attachment A of the staff report. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions of staff?
Chairman Hanson, I would like to point out that we did receive correspondence from Committee for Green Foothills in support of the project, and I would just like to echo the planning and building department's support and appreciation of Mid Peninsula Open Space District's efforts to restore the site.
Yes. This brings up to my questions, is the committee of Green Foothills documented the history of the tanks, which was not in our administrative report? Is that correct? The outline that they have there?
I have no reason to believe it's not. I think Ms. Roberts is one of the most knowledgeable persons in the county about the history of, of these sorts of activities, so I would assume it's accurate.
Okay. I do, I do know that one of the, the oldest oil wells in California is on the San Mateo Coast, and I was just, was wondering if that was related to it. And I do know that this showed up in the 1930s topo map as an oil area.
Yeah, that's right. It's an interesting part of San Mateo County's history that I do not know much about.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, it does cause some reflection in terms of how our, our zoning and development regulations and policies have permitted these in the past, and whether or not they would continue to permit them should someone decide they want to explore these activities. So I don't have an answer for you today on that, but it's something that may be worth looking into in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a question. I don't know whether it is for the project planner or for Steve. So it says that, it's on, that the project cost estimate is 315,000. It's under the environmental review, and hazardous waste cost is a million or less? So is that the total cost?
No. So the CEQA exemption is for only small to medium-sized cleanup activities, and so they define what constitutes a small to medium-sized activity by cost. And so if the cost of the cleanup equals or exceeds a million dollars, it's not small or medium, and you have to do an environmental review. In this case, because the cost is 315,000, it falls under the definition of a small to medium cleanup project and is therefore exempt from CEQA.
So that's the estimate, that it's about 315?
Correct.
Because Ms. Roberts has pointed out that this comes out of the taxpayer, taxpayer dollars.
Well, the Mid Peninsula Open Space District is a public agency, and so that, you know, that's correct. I was frankly surprised that they are able to complete it for that amount, because my experience with, you know, toxic cleanup is they can be very expensive to deal with.
Thank you. So in line with your previous comment that you made, we have other such facilities?
I think that that's true.
I don't totally understand.
I would not be surprised if there are some remnant oil fields within the county. You know, it, it makes me think, you know, when would be the best opportunity for us to look into this in conjunction with some of the other work we're already planning on doing? And one of the things that will be coming up in the next few years is an update to our safety element of our general plan. And I think that, to the degree these remnant facilities pose safety risks either to human health or the environment, that that might be a good time for us to take a look at how we intend to handle any other remnant oil fields.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for explaining.
Yeah, just to add to that a little bit, it would be nice to actually know, you know, how much more there's out there within our jurisdiction. I'm sure throughout the state, there's a lot. Yes. And, you know, I'm not 100% sure of this, but, you know, just like we have some mines and quarries within the county, I think it's the same state agency that we work with in regulating mines and quarries that would help us oversee oil extraction facilities. So I'll speak with my staff member who works with that agency and see what sort of list we might be able to develop. Our environmental health department as well keeps track of all sites that contain hazardous materials, so we can provide that information.
That would be nice. And just to echo Mr. Hanson's comment, it was nice to see the history, historical part of it that Committee for Green Foothills provided, because it gives you a deeper perspective of what we're dealing with.
Well, particularly, you know, seeing something recent being cleaned up, you know, I'd be happy to lead the parade of, with a banner and a hat and cleaning it up, but also if it turned out to be one of the original oil fields, you know, should we also look for an opportunity to make sure something isn't destroyed that maybe we would like to save and commemorate too, you know? But I said may. But, you know, something like this is definitely should be moved forward. I think that we should be moving forward, particularly since it's 1970s crap.
You know, I assume a representative of the Open Space District is here, and perhaps they have some words they'd like to speak, and I don't know if they intend on having any sort of potential interpretive facility to explain the history, but I think it'd be appropriate to open it up to the applicant if they so desire.
So do we have any more questions for staff? Okay. Continue on.
One more. So how can we be, we take advantage of what we are doing today on this project so that next time something similar comes up, we don't have to go through everything all over again saying, oh, this is what we did then, this is what? Set up some kind of a trend or document some kind of a trend? Is that something that's done?
Well, so the cleanup activity is typically the responsibility of the property owner. And in this case, the Open Space District, who's been actively acquiring available open space land, has really, I believe, built a very useful toolkit of measures that they apply to ensure that their restoration activities have minimal adverse impact and, you know, the greatest beneficial impact. And so I think that they have their playbook of how to do this, that they, they can replicate on other sites, and I'm, I would assume that they'd be willing to share that approach with other interested property owners. And I don't know that we have the ability to require property owners that have these remnant facilities to actively remove them. Probably if there was active pollution going on, in which case I think we'd need to partner with the state and the federal environmental protection agencies to order some sort of restoration. But I think between working with Mid Peninsula Open Space District and other experts in the field, we can help encourage other remediation activities.
Follow, follow on to that. Ms. Roberts mentions that in the past, even though this was agricultural land, it had zoning of agricultural land, still this oil, oil drilling was approved, oil production was approved. So that is what I was referring to, that it doesn't happen again.
Right. And I, I think I'd have to do a little bit more research, but I think that was likely because the agricultural zoning district allowed continued production. And so I think in order to get ahead of any future proposal to do additional drilling or extraction, we may need to change or amend the zoning regulations. But, yeah, that's something we'll need to look into.
Look into. Thank you. Thank you for explaining, Steve. No more questions.
Thank you. Does, does the applicant have a presentation they wish to do?
Good morning. Jay Lin, Engineering Construction Manager with MidPen. Really appreciate Canoa's presentation. It was like very well presented. Wanted to say thank you for welcoming the project and being supportive of it. And speaking to the interpretive signage that Commissioner Hanson mentioned, unfortunately, we're not opening this area up to the public at the moment, but we do have other plans for trails around the area. If our planning department kind of looks into the history, if it makes sense, some of this may be interpreted at a different location. But at the moment, we don't have public access through here. And our mission is essentially threefold: purchase, preserve, and provide public access. And we're doing two of the three main goals at the site, which is purchase and preserve the land. So just want to say thank you.
Does anybody have a question?
I have a question. Just to my understanding, the idea of removing this, and I'm sorry if I've been discussing papers, but I didn't quite understand some of the papers. But besides the idea of removing all this is because you guys wanted to set up a recreational area?
For this specific area, we don't have immediate plans for recreational, kind of going back to our mission, which is to purchase, preserve, and kind of clean up the land. This is why we're doing this project at the moment, essentially to purchase the land and clean it up, clean up the oil fields. So no recreational area here at the moment.
Any other questions? Yes?
So were you, I'm sorry, I'm turning this off because of my cough. Were you contacted by the owner? You mentioned that it was, it's being purchased by Mid Peninsula?
Yeah. Our real property department works with the local constituents closely to, you know, try to acquire lands like these and preserve it for the public. So we have, we do contact local landowners.
Okay. Yeah. So, so you contacted them? It's not that they wanted to dispose of this property?
To be honest, I'm not sure who contacted who.
Okay. Not a problem. Right. Okay. My question really came from why this property, if, if we think there are others similar properties around where, which may need cleanup.
I wish my real property manager were here to speak to it, but to my knowledge, we usually work with the local landowners, and we try to acquire land at a fair price as a public agency. And if they're willing to sell, we would be willing to negotiate to purchase the land. So oftentimes, the landowners don't want to sell, or, you know, we can't acquire it at the price they're asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll open up to the public portion. Do we have anybody who wished to speak?
None.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak? Seeing none and without objections, we'll close the public portion and go to discussion. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say a couple of words on this. Yeah, I think it's nice to see, you know, some of these sites that obviously have been polluting, and I think overall in this area, we don't want to see any places that are polluting the environment and, you know, the cleanup, it's always nice to, to see that when someone takes on a project like this and starts to remediate some of the problems. And I'm just going to make a quick comment to what you said about the, you know, maybe partnering the county and the state and the federal government. And I would say that you're very hopeful then, to think that maybe the federal government would actually help us at this point to partner with on doing cleanups or stuff like that. That's my personal opinion about that. So anyway, that's my comment.
And you have a comment? Just, you know, the federal EPA has certain responsibilities when there are tox, levels of toxins at a certain stage. So I agree, they're not going to be proactive in helping us, but should we find some of certain levels?
Yeah, I think at this particular point, then, I think we're on our own.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
May I? Yeah, I, I really would echo acknowledging Ms. Roberts' letters, letter to us commissioners. Truly, it gives us a little background, and we were, most of us were there when all this oil embargo and things happened, so we can relate to it. And also providing us some of the other relevant information. So that's one side of it, and I am in support of this project, and I think it's a good thing we are doing that, not only this cleanup, but also for the environment and whatever we, however we can talk about global warming and to delete as much as we can. So thank you.
May I make a motion?
Oh, please.
A move that we approve, the coastal development permit, county file number PLN 201900242, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A of the staff report.
Second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 It's unanimous. It carries five zero. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is correspondence and other matters.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We received some correspondence from the Midcoast Community Council dating back to October 23rd, and my apologies for not reporting on this earlier. Commissioner Ketchum kindly reminded me of it, and I'll hand it over to Commissioner Ketchum to address it.
I just, so I brought you copies, copies of it. Basically, I just want to talk about the final point in the letter. This was in support of renewing the MCC's request from 2017 on various long-term planning items, but the, the one to expedite clarification of how building height is measured in the midcoast is, there's only three districts where this key sentence defining building height measurement is missing, and that's in the neighborhood commercial and the resource management coastal zone and the plant ag. And this is just in the Midcoast LCP update area. So I, I attached, just in this case, the 2017 letter, letter on that item, and then I, I made a new page here, and basically, this is a proposed, this is to show you in my, I mean, I don't know, I just assume, looking at other county zoning ordinances, that this is all, all that would be required is to add this one sentence, and here's where it would go in the three districts. And this comes from the, the most recent zoning ordinances updated for North Fair Oaks. There's, something like this is included there. And then also recently, the second dwelling units has the definition for direct measurement, and even the mobile home ordinance from 2018 was approved by the board and then, well, asked to go back and put the sentence in. So it came through twice in order to add that sentence. So seems like county staff as well wants to move toward this direct measurement. And so my, my, the reason I'm bringing it up today is since this seems to me, anyway, so simple, that because the, the building height in the midcoast was lowered to 28 feet and the ones where it had, was still 36, it was lowered with the LCP update in 2012. And it appears to me that the sentence was just forgotten. It was, it was probably intended to be put in there, and it was forgotten. And so I just, since it was already everywhere else in the midcoast. So I, I just wanted to bring it up because I think this definition- So I, I just wanted to bring it up because I think this definition, this is, this will come up with the Cypress Point PUD, and it's, I want it in people's minds and also just to put this out there, couldn't this be expedited if it were, if the three ordinances had it added? And then it would be sort of waiting there to be packaged with another LCP amendment and sent off together. I understand there's some limit to how many we could submit.
Yes, I'd be happy to respond. So I agree, the, the text change is simple and straightforward and limited. However, whether you're doing a one-sentence change or you're redoing an entire ordinance, it's the same process. So in order to make a little change or a big change, we need to go through a notification process to make sure all affected property owners are aware and have an opportunity to comment. We need to prepare reports for the planning commission. We need to bring it to the Board of Supervisors. We need to prepare a submittal to the Coastal Commission. And thus, you have an intensive process that we reserve for our highest priorities. Now, the reason why you see it popping up in different zoning districts is because we are supportive of this clarification, and we have done it in every instance where we have an opportunity to incorporate it into a LCP amendment that's a bigger scope, because we don't typically use the resources required for that intensive process to do minor changes. We let them build up and we have a package of changes. And so that's why I had previously recommended that we incorporate this change as part of the design review changes that the design review committee had been working on. Now, what's occurred is that the design reviews committees work towards clarifying design review standards and including this, you know, height clarification, has expanded into a more comprehensive discussion of how we're dealing with commercial areas on the midcoast. And I think that's a fruitful discussion to have, but it has created a much larger project that is going to require more time to really carefully plan out and work with the various affected business districts. So I am now skeptical as to whether or not the design review update is the appropriate vehicle to achieve the requested clarification to height. I, I think the staff continues to be willing to consider it as part of all amendments that move forward. So you mentioned the Cypress Point PUD amendment that will coming, come before us. We will have an opportunity at that time to determine whether or not this needs to be clarified as part of that amendment. And I am willing for other LCP amendments where there's an appropriate nexus to include this change, but I'm reluctant to direct staff to expend the resources only for this change because, among other reasons, beyond resources, is in our local coastal program, we are, we given broad authority to protect visual resources. The height limit established by zoning is a maximum. It's not guaranteed entitlement for that height. And so where we need to clarify how height needs to be measured for a particular project, we have the flexibility to do so in our visual protection policies. And for that reason, I don't find this to be an urgent matter, that we should divert our staff resources that are working on these much bigger projects to just deal with this. So that's the staff's response.
Do you see, when you talk about the outreach is required, and just focusing on neighborhood commercial, as I would envision it when Plan Princeton was brought forward, there was a lot of community interest in that project. And, and since we hear that may be coming up again this year, and there are public meetings about that, it would seem like as far as the community is concerned, that the, you know, you're talking about commercial recreation, and then if you were to just have a conversation in, fit in there, one part of that, about neighborhood commercial, the people who are concerned about that, because they don't differentiate the community between the neighborhood commercial, it's all there for them. And you would, you would, it would provide a broader conversation if you could tie it in with Plan Princeton, because you've got the people in the room. Just a thought. And, and maybe that's a possible package that we could be included with.
I, I think that's certainly worthy of consideration, and I don't disagree that they could move forward in a package together. The one, you know, area of caution I have is Plan Princeton does not have neighborhood commercial zoning districts within the project's scope. So we would be expanding the project's scope, and, you know, I'm reluctant to do that because I know it's been a long time since we initiated Plan Princeton, but we do want to bring it to a smooth conclusion hopefully this year. So like I say, I don't object to the idea, but that's my only hesitation.
Thank you.
Do you want something beyond what this discussion, or?
No, this is good. I, I guess I just wanted to bring it before you because I knew this would probably come up with Cypress Point, and so now you know what the topic is, and that's great. Thanks.
Okay. Any more communications or?
No communications. I'm ready to move on to the next meeting, if that's okay with you.
Please do.
So the next meeting we have planned is the January 22nd meeting. And we currently are, have on that agenda the Local Coastal Program Amendment for the Cypress Point project. And because this is a significant project with a lot of local interest, and we have an obligation to maximize opportunities for public participation, we are planning on holding the meeting in Half Moon Bay at the new library between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00 PM. So hopefully that will work for you all, and we'll have an opportunity to consider all the issues associated with the project, including building height measurements. So that will provide an opportunity to address at least part of the issue that has been raised by Commissioner Ketchum. With regard to the study session, a couple of things that come to mind that I'd like to bring to you in the near future. Number one, review of the long-range work program. I try and do that every calendar year, and I think it relates to the discussion we just had about how we prioritize our resources, given the long list of regulate, regulatory and plan amendments we need to do. And then the other idea I had, based on the item we had on this morning, is perhaps the commission may benefit from a study session or information session on Mid Peninsula and other open space and land trust organizations' efforts to acquire and protect and preserve land. So I think that could be an informative session. So if that's okay with the commissioners, I'll proceed to make those arrangements.
I'd like that very much.
Yeah, I second that.
May I ask a question about the 22nd?
Absolutely.
So will, will we be asked to make a recommendation at that meeting, or will this just be a study session with a follow-up?
The staff will have a recommendation before you, and it will be up to you whether or not you feel ready to proceed with that, but we will be asking you to adopt a recommendation.
Okay, and the, there's some confusion. I'm confused. So this is a two-phase process, and on the face of it, the first phase is very cut and dry, a very brief LCP amendment, an update of this PUD, and I'm not clear, okay, to update the PUD, it was just said we just need to update the number of units. But if you see the PUD, which isn't posted with the project, clearly there's a lot of other stuff that has to be amended, and because that project, that PUD references a project that was approved, and now this is just not, that isn't there to reference. So that's still, I mean, nobody has seen the proposed PUD amendments. It's not, and so I'm not sure how that will go, and as you said, there's a lot of interest in this project, and when there's a big question mark there, that doesn't sit well with some people. And anyway, so more clarity on that wording? I mean, do we have to wait for the staff report until we see what this PUD wording will be? Sooner the better.
Yes, yes.
Then the other confusion I have is SEQA process, because we're told that the Phase Two is a CDP, and normally that would include the SEQA process, but the Coastal Commission, in doing their examination of the LCP amendment, they have their SEQA equivalent, right? And the documents from the applicant are voluminous, with all materials which would look like SEQA information. So the, the concern for the community and for me is, where do you ask your questions? Because if we're told, oh, the CDP comes later, and so you wait with your concerns, and then, and then at that point, they'll say, oh, well, sorry, it was already approved with the first, and so that, we don't want that to happen. So how does the SEQA portion, all that, where does that occur? Is, are we going to be going over all those documents for this meeting on the 22nd?
Before I answer, I just want to turn to Tim, because I'm reluctant to engage in a detailed discussion of the project or the proposal outside of a public hearing format. So I can, I think, stick to the facts about how the SEQA process works for LCP amendments versus permits, without getting into the details of this project. Okay. So as you know, SEQA serves the purpose of informing decision-makers about the environmental impacts of a project, okay? A determination whether or not to certify a SEQA document is a determination as to whether or not the lead agency, in this case, the county, has fulfilled its obligation in putting the information and analysis there, right? The decision whether to approve or disprove a project is separate and distinct from SEQA. Okay. So when it comes to the Local Coastal Program Amendment process, the Coastal Commission is really the final lead agency. They're making the decision. But the state legislature and crafting SEQA said, well, we don't need to make you prepare a SEQA document, because you guys do such an in-depth review of addressing all the environmental issues, that your report and analysis is satisfactory for environmental information. And when, in order to enable the commission to provide that functional equivalent level of review, both the applicant and the county have the obligation to get them the information that they need, so that they can complete their review. So I think that as it relates to next hearing, we will be asking you to recommend that the board direct staff to submit this amendment to the commission. And I would say a relevant question is, have we provided as part of our recommendation and analysis adequate information about the scope of the LCP amendment change to give the commission the opportunity to provide a functional level of environmental review? Now, as you mentioned, the scope of the PUD amendment is fairly limited. I agree, it's more than just a reduction in the number of units. There are some changes to the site plan and layout that have been done in order to minimize impacts. So I think, you know, those are the relevant questions when it comes to, have we done, have we put the information out there that will enable the commission to do equivalent analysis? And so I think that's a fair question to ask. But when it comes to the public's ability to ask hard questions about the environmental impacts of this LCP amendment, the best, the most important point for them to do that will be at the Coastal Commission hearing on the local coastal amendment, because the commission's action, whether to certify or not, is the functional equivalent of SEQA. It is the SEQA action for the LCP amendment. Now, the permit will follow. The permit is not going to the Coastal Commission, and therefore is subject to SEQA. And we will do supplemental environmental review that delves into the project details, the specific impacts of the construction, for say, which is not necessarily relevant to the LCP amendment at this point, because under the current LCP, somebody could apply for a CDP to do construction. So we're not changing that. We're not making the site eligible for construction. It currently is. So all those environmental impacts associated with the construction of the project will need to be addressed at the project level. And that will be another point at which the public and the community has an opportunity to provide input to you and to the staff as to whether or not a recommended action to approve the project has fulfilled environmental review requirements. So that, that was a long response. I hope it was clear, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
That helps. Yeah, it's a, it's a big thing to get a grip on, but thank you.
Director's report?
You know, I believe I covered everything I was intending to report on in our discussion previously, so yeah, I'll leave it at that unless there's any other questions for me.
Janice, you requested some information from us, whether to attend the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Did you get all of the responses you wanted?
No. So far, I just have one, which is Commissioner Gupta is the only one that's expressed interest. Is there anyone else that would like to join her in that training?
I did reply, but I said I couldn't.
You want, you couldn't go? Okay.
No for me.
Okay. The date, I believe, is February 1st. Talk to me later. Okay.
I'll talk to you about it. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did any of the commissioners have any updates or comments or questions? Okay, then we'll, is, is this a just reconvening?
So I think the commission meeting will continue, because being all together, we're in a Brown Act situation, so our discussions are open to the public. So I think we can proceed for our holiday brunch, and then at the conclusion of that, the meeting will be adjourned, if that's okay with the chair and council. Yes.
Adjourned right there?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Good with you?
Good with me.
Okay. Thank you very much.